This conference will now be recorded.
There we go.
Okay, and Dave, do you want to review the rules?
Sure. So, rules for remote participation and etiquette during planning commission meetings, agenda review, which we just went through. We are now at the public meeting portion. If accessing the meeting electronically and you desire to make a comment, please type your full name and address in the chat box. During courtesy of the floor, your name will be read and you will have three minutes to make your comments. Time will be allotted for comments from those who are accessing the meeting by phone only. Speakers will again be limited to three minutes. The speaker must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Please mute your microphone to avoid background noise that may occur, may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Your cooperation and adherence with to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. I want to point out one thing with this meeting. At 10:30, we will need to go to some yearly things on our agenda. There, the election of officers and the 2021 meeting dates. So that we will continue anything that has not been completed by that time. All right. I also, okay, we want to take a roll call.
David Dunbar.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Bill McNair.
Here.
Matthew O'Quinn.
Here.
Alan Tope.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
All seven members are present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, and welcome, Matt, to your first meeting on the planning commission. We will, you're welcome. We will start with the approval of minutes. Are there any? The minutes are issued for, they were for the September 30th meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none? Is there a proposal to? Proposal to approve?
No move.
Second, so.
Alan Tope, second by David Dunbar.
Good. Roll call vote.
David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew O'Quinn.
Abstain.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero, one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item three, a comprehensive plan update summary. Dave?
Um, so where we've kind of, the survey's still out. Last I checked, we were at 550 responses. We have started looking at, starting to have the these four minutes off meeting, which we're hoping to schedule most likely end of January, sometime beginning of February. One of the things that became apparent based under our current restrictions with COVID is that the meeting would have to be run online. And we are currently looking to hire a consultant to help us run those meetings or that meeting that has the technology to, you know, have breakout sessions and reconvene. So we're currently processing that. And that's an update shortly. One, if I could, so that concludes my comp plan update, but just for everybody's, so everybody's aware, I'm going to mute callers because typically there's a lot of interference and they had, sometimes callers have trouble muting. So I'm going to go ahead and mute the callers and when we open it up to courtesy of the floor, I will go open it up to callers at that point. Thank you.
Okay. Well, good. I think that made a difference. All right. Agenda item four is presentations. The first one is by Rue for subdivision, minor plan 2013 dash 201. Anyone here from Rue?
Yes. Keystone Consulting Engineers with Bob Rue.
Alan, would you like me to make you a presenter?
Uh, sure. Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess. Um, yeah, so I'm here with Bob and what we're, what we're here for tonight is the time extension is running out next month for the project. There was another engineering firm that's been working on this project in the past. The Rues have now hired us, Keystone Consulting Engineers, to move forward with this project. So we're looking to resubmit this, this plan with some updates to it, probably for the February planning commission, March of the very latest, but we're shooting for February. Anything else you want to say? Nope. So that's, that's what, we don't have any plan at the moment that's, that's different from the last one you've, you've seen, but we're working on, working on some modifications to make it a little bit more streamlined and presentable for, you know, the constraints.
Okay, and you're asking for a waiver from the time limitation to review the plan?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone that wants to, any issues with allowing the time extension from board? Okay, if there is none, we'll, we'll move on, then there's no problem with that. You have the, you, oh, you have to.
Bill, there's a, it appears there's a question from Joe Rintko on this topic.
Okay, it's actually.
I don't know if it's appropriate now for.
Yeah, he's, he's the engineer for the next project.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's all right. Okay, so. All right, so then we will move on to, to the next project then, and we will hear from Rue in a month or two.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for the time and the consideration for that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 1420 North 22nd Street.
Dave, Joe Rintko is on the phone, so you might want to unmute.
He's got his name there, so. Oh, he called in.
Oh, hey, guys, it's Joe Rintko. How are you?
Okay.
Good, good.
Okay, thanks for hearing us. I know you guys are, again, everybody's really busy tonight. Real quick, last, we heard it last month, and we got a conditional approval for the minor subdivision of 1420. I went through the conditions with the owner, Nadell, and he really, he talked to Mr. Adams, and he really wanted to ask to reconsider the deferral for the sidewalk along 14, or along 22nd Street. Since, if everybody's familiar with the plan, it was just, it's a, it's a two lot subdivision. The new lot would be created on, would access Grove Street. And he's, he's aware that he, at a minimum, he'd have to put sidewalk in at the time of construction for Grove Street to the corner. But the existing house fronts North 22nd Street. And, and I know the township, it's in their best interest to have sidewalk everywhere that they possibly could. There is actually sidewalk on the east side of 22nd Street right now. But there is no sidewalk on, on hit Nadell's side of 22nd Street, which is the west side. So I think what the, what Nadell would really like would be to keep the condition for the sidewalk to be installed along Grove Street at the time of construction of the new house, but defer the sidewalk along 22nd Street to the time to a later date when the township would come in with sidewalks along the rest of that block of 22nd Street. So it's something I have to ask. I believe Nadell called in tonight, so maybe, maybe it would mean more to hear, hear this request coming from him personally. But um, that's the only thing we wanted to bother you guys, everybody with tonight.
Okay. So, right now, is there any feeling from the planning commission on whether to grant this referral? Right now, there is no deferral, so the plan would require sidewalks in both, on both, or all three streets. Any comments from the planning commission on whether they feel that should be deferred?
I just had the opinion that if you're going to put it on Grove Street, it's going to be cheaper for the homeowner to put it in along 22nd Street at the same time. All they have to do is make a call. You come back in five, 10 years when the township wants to do it, or, you know, then it's going to be more expensive and then you have a homeowner going, well, why didn't you make me do it when I had to do it on Grove Street? So I think it would be more cost beneficial to put it in now, but that's just my opinion. So, thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts? We either have to make a motion to, we, we, we don't have to, if we do nothing, there's no deferral. So people feel that there's a, a a, a good case for a deferral here. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'm sorry, can I ask one quick question? Is there any plan to widen 22nd Street? Or is there, is there something in it, Greg, or?
22nd Street, I believe, is already at full right-of-way dedication. And it's an existing roadway. I, I, Tony, I'm not quite sure if it, if the cartway matches, but it's the same width, the length of 22nd Street. So I don't know of any immediate plans to widen it anytime soon.
Yeah, the road's 32 feet wide, or 31 points, so feet wide, and the right-of-way's already 60, 60 foot wide. In this general location, I don't know if there's any plans. Existing neighborhood, no real potential around there for development or other projects that would come in that would widen. So I can't, I don't believe so.
Do you know when, and this may be a question for the applicant, when the lot two will be developed?
The, this is, this is Joe again. The, I think, great, great, I don't know if it's, you're able to know which caller the applicant is. He, he definitely is on one of the calls, but he's muted. When I spoke to him right before the submission, he has no immediate plans to build that, that, construct on that lot two. I think, I think the lot two is really going to be reserved for one of his children, or maybe his son. But, but he definitely would be the one to ask, and he probably could give you more specifics on that.
The callers, there he is. The callers are currently unmuted.
Nadell, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am muted.
Okay, we hear you.
You're okay now, we hear you.
You want to go ahead?
Nadell, are you there?
I'm here. You hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm not planning to build on the land right now. This is for a future for my son to build a house. But, and that's what I'm trying to do, like, to, to not have a sidewalk on my old property on the front of 22nd Street. But if I build for my son on Grove Street, that's the access for the land, that will be considered a sidewalk. I need help with that because
I'm asking you, do you have a future?
For the future.
I couldn't hear.
My, my home right now, I don't have any, the sidewalk, there's a sidewalk across from me, to the people to use. If you understand me, what I mean.
I, I get the gist of what you said. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all what I'm I have to say.
Okay, any other comments from the planning commission?
So the deferral would simply mean that all the sidewalks will be done at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you do nothing, the, the deferral that you had previously recommended last month requires that the sidewalks on Grove Street and 22nd be done when the house is constructed. He is basically asking that the sidewalks on 22nd be deferred until the township calls that, and at some future date.
And we've had pushback in the past from pulling in deferrals. Not this location, but other, other properties in the township, so.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would agree with that, Brian.
Okay.
I kind of agree with Brian, but.
So, but this would be a requirement just to put, yeah, this would, I mean, I'm wondering about the validity of just putting a sidewalk in front of his house at this point, and then having to put a new sidewalk in, in the next house. So I'm just looking at the, I'm not, I think we shouldn't necessarily not put sidewalks in, but just from a practicality standpoint, I don't know what the validity is of putting a sidewalk in here and.
I know, like, every month, every month at these meetings, the roads aren't safe, people are walking in the streets. So when you put sidewalk on, that typically makes it safer.
Oh, no doubt about it. I, like I said, I'm not, I'm not questioning the validity of having a sidewalk. I'm just wondering whether, I mean, I'm not sure I have, I'm not sure I understand why it's an issue to, to defer until he develops a second property if all we're talking about is putting a sidewalk in front of his house now, and then when the next house is developed, then they have to put a sidewalk in.
We're not, we're, I think, it's, we're.
The house gets built.
Yeah, so it's doing what you're saying, Matt. Right now, that's the way it's set up. It's deferred until the new house is built.
So what he's, what he's, right, he wants to put the sidewalk in on Grove when the new house is built. Right now, nothing's going to happen. When the new house is built, he just wants to put it on Grove. We deferred last month to make him go around to the existing house as well. So it'd be all just done at the same time. It wouldn't be done in parts, piecemeal. If I'm wrong, correct me. Yeah, so, thank you.
Now, you are correct.
Okay. Hearing, I'm hearing a consensus that it's just to leave the deferral the way it is. Does anybody have any other thoughts? Okay, we're going to, there's, there's not going to be any vote. Right now, the deferral will remain as is, that the sidewalks are deferred until the new house is built, and then they're all required.
Okay, thank you, ladies, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great night. Thanks for here, at least hearing our case tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay. Now we're on to subdivision review. These will consist of a staff presentation by Greg, applicant presentation, and then courtesy of the floor, and then a planning commission decision. So we'll start off with 3926 Lime Kiln Road on the plan 2020 dash 203.
Okay. This is an application to subdivide the property located at 3926 Lime Kiln Road. The plan proposes to subdivide the 63.9628 acre lot into Lot One, containing a single existing dwelling unit and four accessory buildings on a 1.2967 acre lot, fronting Lime Kiln Road. Lot Two, containing an existing single dwelling unit on a 1.8415 acre lot, fronting Orfield Road. And lot, the result, and the residual Lot Three, containing 60.8226 acres, fronting Orfield and Lap Roads. The subject property is owned RR2 Rural Residential Two. Anthony and Janelle Hannah are the owners and applicants. The department recommends the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeline in which to act upon the plan. Those deadlines are the soft, soft deadline for planning commission is January 18th, 2021. Hard deadline for the Board of Commissioners is February 17th, 2021.
Okay.
Greg, am I up?
Yes.
Okay, this is Mark Bradbury. I'm working with Tony Hannah on the subdivision. I had a little bit of a stumbling block when it came to the lot averaging, and we've decided to, instead of moving forward in that direction, since there are other variances that we may need, we're going to be going to the zoning hearing board for the smaller lot, which is Lot One, for the deficiency in the lot size. These buildings that are currently there are single-family dwellings that have existed. Some of them for over 60 years, and probably even some of those buildings go back 70, 80 years. We're not trying to develop any new lots at this point in time. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to separate the existing residential buildings away from the environmental protection area, which is the landfill. Mr. Hannah does own the landfill at this point in time. Was purchased from the Novak family several months ago. We do have, if you notice on your board, Jeffrey Sibel is on with us tonight from DeMaximus. His company was the company that oversaw all the environmental cleanup. And, you know, when it comes to anything or any questions about the environmental restrictions, I did send a copy of what has been recorded to everyone so that they're fully aware of what's going on with inside the environmental restriction area. The only thing that I wanted to go over tonight would be the deferrals for the, first of all, the curb and sidewalk. If you notice, the right-of-way along Lime Kiln Road is very jagged. We are not changing the right-of-way. That right-of-way was taken when the subdivision was done in 1995. It's a very sawtoothed type of right-of-way that goes around the buildings. We're not offering any new right-of-way at this time. We have our right-of-way maxed out in every direction that we can. And if you look at Lime Kiln Road, there's obviously no place to put curb and sidewalk. Second of all, I, listening to some of the earlier comments about if we don't get deferrals, we'll have to design stormwater, we have to be very careful. Lime Kiln Road, from the intersection of Orfield Road, there's a high point that the water breaks and heads to the west, where the buildings are right out along the road, so there would be nowhere to put any detention in that area. You know, where could we supply any? The same with Lap Road. If road widening or sidewalk is ever developed along Lap Road, the environmental protection area comes right out, and the fence comes right out to the right-of-way. And with the environmental restrictions and the cap and the landfill, we could not add any, any detention facilities in those areas whatsoever. So I don't know, if you decide to defer them, that's fine. In those particular areas, a waiver from them might be more beneficial, because I don't think they can ever sustain any type of stormwater calculations or detention on the property. I, I believe that if you look at the aerial photographs, you can see that the entire length of Lap Road and a good portion of Orfield Road is wooded and has trees all the way along the roads. The houses are landscaped with a lot of older trees. And that was one of the waivers I had asked for from the landscape and street tree placement. And I'd hope you support that. I believe.
Hold on one second. Mr. Bradbury, I apologize. Greg or Tony, can you put up the, the plan? So we can all be on the same, like, page. Thank you. Sorry, Mark.
No, no, that's okay. Take your time.
Sure, I can get that up. Um, Dave, I think I need to be presenter again, if you don't mind. All right. Apologize for delay. Everyone see the phone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we do come back in after we go through zoning, I will probably have a few additional waivers, providing existing proposed contours and sidewalks, trails, driveways, and easements within right-of-ways within 400 feet. The location, character, elevation, buildings with one, within 100 feet of sight, or absence of the same. As you can see, along the areas where our houses are, there's sufficient topography to show houses, intersections, anything substantial within that area. And again, we're not proposing any type of development. All we're trying to do is to separate, right now, you have two principal uses on, on one lot with having two single-family homes. It's been that way for a number of years. We would now like to separate those two homes and be able to have those as separate entities. And again, sub that, subdivide them off of the existing landfill that is with inside the fenced area that is currently shown as a proposed property line to the south of those units. See what else we have. I don't think there's anything else that I really need to discuss. I will be talking to engineering and staff on a couple of the other items that are on the list, and I don't want to waste the planning commission's time tonight. But I do not want to move forward and go into another phase of this project where we go to zone, the zoning hearing board, obtain variances, and then come back and are faced with a dilemma of possibly having to put curb, sidewalk, street trees, trails, and, and all sorts of things around the project that virtually is not subject to any type of changes for quite some time. Again, it's basically an existing condition that we're trying to make more conform. uh, for quite some time. Again, it's basically an existing condition that, uh, we're trying to make more conforming um, and separating the two single-family homes into two separate lots. So before we, uh, really exercise our, our ability to go to zoning, we would like to at least get a favorable recommendation from the planning commission, um, for those waivers. Or deferrals.
Hi, Mark. A separate question I have is if that environmental restriction area is getting subdivided off of the other properties, i- is there a proposed accessway to get into that area from a road?
Yes, yeah, and it's shown on the plan. Uh, that was developed, uh, many years ago uh, and recorded, uh, that access easement is already recorded as part of the, uh, landfill and the environmental restriction area. Um, it basically gets you into a locked fence, uh, and allows access, um, uh, for DeMaximus or anyone else that would ever need to get on the site. Um, so yes, there is an access easement off of Lime Kiln Road.
All right, thank you.
Any other commission, planning commissions have any questions?
So there's no construction being planned for this at all, right?
No, nothing.
Does anybody have any comments? Does anybody have any issues with, with these? Uh, there, there will be deferrals where, where they can be. As opposed to waivers for some of the things. A- any, um, issues with with, with, uh, this, uh, I guess you're looking for feedback. Are, are you looking for votes on each, on these, or?
I, I would like to, uh, absolutely have a, a firm grasp on, uh, at least the curb and the sidewalk. Um, if the planning commission would need a little more additional time to look at, uh, the amount of trees and landscaping that it currently exists, we can ask for that after we go through zoning. Uh, but the curb, sidewalk and road widening are an absolute must at this point in time.
If, if, if you're saying there's no construction right now, um, um, I prefer deferrals opposed to waivers. Um,
But, but Mark, you're saying even if there is construction, there's no place to, to deal with the stormwater?
That is correct. Um, especially on Lime Kiln Road and on Lap Road. Um, you know, Lime Kiln water discharges from east to west. And as you can see, the buildings and houses in that lot is pretty much filled to the maximum. There would be no place to do any detention. And the same thing going down Lap Road, um, to put a detention facility to capture any widening or sidewalk, um, impervious coverage would have to be built in, into the landfill, which is currently restricted and could not be built. That is correct.
Okay. Uh, so for the, Greg, can you read the, so is, is just two of them that you're asking for right now, Mark, the-
I believe the, the, um, the curb, the sidewalk and the, um, the road widening, the cross-sections of the Collector and minor arterial road, that we would not have to, we get deferrals on those also.
Okay. If, if you go to page forty-three.
Yeah, okay.
Which is the, uh, pidcock letter. He's looking for C, D, E and F specifically.
That's correct.
All right, um. Okay, so the, let's just go through them, I think, uh, that'd be the fastest way. Uh, the numbers, letter C is waiver of installation of curb along Orfield Road and Lap Road. Uh, no, does everybody see that where, where those are? Um, here, a motion to, this would be a, a deferral. Motion for a deferral of installation of curb along Orfield and Lap, Road and Lap Road. Do I hear it? Hear a motion?
I make a motion to defer.
And I think Lime Kiln should be also on there. I didn't, I just noticed Orfield, Lap are on there, but obviously Lime Kiln should also be included with that.
Okay. But Orfield, Lime Kiln and, and Lap. Diane, you, you make the motion?
Yes, I do.
Do you want to hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, that was Dave and, um,
Yeah. Diane made the motion. Dave Wilson seconded. Roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so that was for the, uh, curb. The next one's for D is waiver for installation of sidewalk along Orfield Road, Lime Kiln Road and Lap Road. You hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer it.
Correct. Moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Who said?
Matt Mulqueen.
Okay.
Matt Mulqueen.
All right, roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, the next one is, is item E, and it's, I was gonna say, uh, would this be a deferral provision of an arterial street cross-section for Orfield Road? Your motion?
Make a motion to defer.
Second?
Second.
A second.
Okay, motion by Diane Kelly and second by, that was?
Brian Height.
Brian, okay.
All right, roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, and the last one is, uh, item F, changing, it'll be a deferral of the provision of Collector Street cross-section for Lime Kiln Road and Lap Road, and I guess, okay, just for those two, for Lime Kiln Road and Lap Road. We hear a motion?
So moved.
Brian, and second?
Second.
Alan, okay.
Okay, roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, that's-
Thank you very much, everyone. Um, we'll be looking forward to coming back and seeing you after we, um, go through our zoning appeal. Um, hopefully everyone has a nice holiday and please stay safe and healthy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, um, next we have the, I'm just gonna say the mosque. Um, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that. Um, so, uh, this will be major plan, uh, number twenty twenty dash one oh nine request for preliminary, you know, plan review. I'd be grateful to start with you.
Okay, this is an application to further develop the property located at fifteen hundred Ridgeview Drive. The plan proposing the rate, the raising of the existing sixteen thousand eighty-eight square foot two-story mosque and the construction of a new twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty square foot three-story mosque, reducing the existing parking lot by thirteen spaces, all on the four point two seven five six acre parcel. The subject property is Zoned R three Low Density Residential. Shia Isna Ashiri Jamot of Pennsylvania is the owner and applicant. The Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary, subdivision improvement, security, maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to the township to be executed, that sufficient security in a form acceptable to the township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws, presentation, no further than sixty miles from the township's office, and evidence of necessary insurance coverage be provided to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township engineer, the comments of the township engineer as contained in his review letter dated December eleventh, twenty twenty. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township water and sewer engineer, the comments of the township water and sewer engineer as contained in his December fourteenth, twenty twenty review. Four, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review dated December eleventh, twenty twenty. Five, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department, the comments of the department as contained in its review dated December eleventh, twenty twenty. Six, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department, the comments of the Public Works Department as contained in her Bender's Review dated December eleventh, twenty twenty. Seven, that the applicant obtains a review from the LVPC prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Eight, that the applicant obtains a letter from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and/or LCCD approving the NPDES permit application or ENSC plan pursuant to section three twelve thirty-nine E of SALDO. Nine, that the applicant obtains a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facilities planning module or an exemption thereto. Ten, that the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Eleven, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to the South Whitehall Township's water and sewer service are concerned. Twelve, if deemed to be necessary, that a declaration of covenants and easements for a maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. Thirteen, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And fourteen, that the plans are revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. Planning commission deadline to act on the plan, the soft deadline is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The Board of Commissioners hard deadline to act is February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, applicant presentation.
Good evening. Uh, Eric Schott from Fitzpatrick, Winston, Iowa. And, uh, w- with me, and I think I see him, is, uh, is, is Mark Bonnick, uh, the engineer on the project. And there should be on the line, maybe by phone, um, one of the, uh, members of the congregation if, if we need, uh, information from him with respect to any of the operational details that, that Mark and I d- d- don't know anything about. Um, as, uh, Mr. Adams indicated, uh, it's a plan to, to raise the existing, uh, structure, which to my knowledge is about twenty years old, uh, and was built, like, my understanding is when the congregation first came out, uh, to the township. Um, in, uh, looking at the building and wanting to make some improvements, uh, they decided the best course was to r- redo, uh, the entire facility. So that's what they're proposing. Um, since it is a, a redevelopment of the property with how much significant change as to, for example, impervious and things of that sort, it's a fairly straightforward plan. Um, Mark can, can go through any of the engineering comments, but I think what he'll probably say, because we've talked about it, is most of them are, are, will comply. Um, with respect to the recommendation, uh, we, we, we don't, uh, really have any significant comments. Uh, number eight, as Mr. Adams pointed out, we don't think we're going to need an NPDS permit because of the, the lack of, of, of additional disturbance. Uh, and I think the engineer will just show that to your engineer. And then the, that, that recommendation will be appropriate for us to have our erosion control plans, uh, signed off on. And then the only other thing we were gonna point out, and I mentioned this to Mr. Adams, number nine, um, with respect to the, uh, module or the exemption, there's no change in the use and there's no increase, uh, in, in, to our knowledge, in the, in that demand. So, well, Mr. Bonnick will be providing, writing the information uh, that we think will show that we don't actually need to go through that process because, um, uh, because we're not making those changes. Uh, Mark, anything to add at this point before we open up the questions?
Uh, Eric, no, we, uh, we, we did, did discuss these conditions with the applicant and, um, the fourteen are outlined by Mr. Adams. We have no issues with those conditions. Any questions that the planning commission may have uh, for myself or Mr. Jaffar, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, I have a few, uh, I guess, questions, comments. Um, yeah, in, in terms of stormwater, impervious coverage, you know, not increasing, so I, I don't see us, any real stormwater impacts. I guess my only question is, um, if the applicant could speak to the, um, architectural features of the new building. I'm not sure if any, you know, renderings or elevations have been prepared or if, um, they could at least speak to the, the materials and, you know, the aesthetics of what's being proposed.
Sure. Hi, this is, uh, Mr. Jaffer. I just, uh, joined right now. Um, basically, we're looking to kind of, uh, do a refresher because the mosque is about twenty years old. And, um, like any other thing, you want to kind of keep it up to date, which we haven't done for many years. So it's high time that we can improve, uh, from technology to, to looks and make it more look like a twenty twenty building. So we're trying to make it more, uh, futuristic in the sense where it kind of goes with time right now. And because we have the, the, the Sunday school to have better technology, better facilities, and this is, it's basically it's a refresher to make it a much, much nicer place than it is right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, are there any questions, comments from the floor?
I'm not seeing anything in the chat box. Shall we open up to the phone calls?
Okay.
Oh, lines are open. Anybody would like to speak on this project?
Going once, going twice?
Okay. All right, um.
I move that we allow this project to proceed.
Okay, movement, move by Mr. Dunbar. Do you want to hear a second?
Go move.
Second by Mr. Tope. Uh, roll call.
Okay, so this is a motion to recommend approval with the fourteen conditions. Uh, roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thanks for your time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Okay, all right, moving along to the next one is the proposed independent living apartments. At Luther Crest, major plan 2020-104. I'm going to start with the request for preliminary final plan review. Greg?
Okay, as I mentioned, I'm going to read the revised packet. Alright, so this is an application to further develop the property located at 800 Hausman Road. The plan proposes the construction of a three-story, 37,500 square foot addition. Containing 72 independent living apartments. And the removal of 161 parking spaces and the addition of 86 new parking spaces. And the improvements to the stormwater management system. All on a 4.6 acre portion of the 43.5 acre site. Diakon Lutheran Social Ministries is the owner and applicant. Okay, the department recommends that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement. To afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeline in which to act upon the plan. However, should the Planning Commission find the plans sufficient to advance them to the Board of Commissioners. We would recommend that the applicant comply with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary subdivision improvement, security, maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to the township be executed. That sufficient security in a form acceptable to the township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws presentation no further than 60 miles from the township's office. And evidence of the necessary insurance coverage be provided to the plan before being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township engineer. The comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his review dated December 11th, 2020. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township water and sewer engineer. The comments of Mr. Jason Newhart as contained in his review dated December 14th, 2020. Four, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township geotechnical consultant. The comments of Mr. Christopher Taylor as contained in his review dated December 14th, 2020. Five, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department. The comments of the department as contained in its review letter dated December 17th, 2020. Six, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department. Comments of the Public Works Department as contained in Mr. Herb Bender's review dated December 11th, 2020. Seven, that the applicant obtains a review from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Eight, that the applicant obtains a letter from Lehigh County Conservation District. Approving the soil erosion and sedimentation control, control plan pursuant to section 31239E of SALDO. Nine, that the applicant obtains a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facilities planning module or an exemption there too. 10, that the applicant complies with the September 15th, 2020 recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. 11, that the applicant complies with the July 30th, 2020 recommendation of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. 12, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals necessary by South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. 13, if deemed to be necessary, that a declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor. Be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. 14, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services. Prior to the plan being recorded. And 15, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission's soft deadline to act is January 18th, 2021. The Board of Commissioners hard deadline to act is February 17th, 2021.
Okay, you hear from the applicant?
Yeah, hi, I'm Bill Kik and with Herbert Rowland and Grubik and with me is Anna Hatton. And Steve Daniels is also on the line right now from Diakon Lutheran Social Ministries. We last appeared before you in September. We've spent the intervening time finishing our NPDS permit application and addressing the comments that were last submitted by the various reviewers for the township. We've since submitted a revised plan last month and that's how we got before you this evening. We've also participated in the pre-application meeting with the Conservation District. And done our formal plans, the middle now that process has gone well. So I think we still have some comments to work through with the township as noted by Mr. Adams. Which we are certainly willing to do and are doing. And if a conditional approval is in the offing tonight. I believe that the applicant does not have any objections to continuing to work through these comments with staff. And get everything finalized prior to reaching the Board of Commissioners meeting. Other than that, if there are specific questions about anything that was in any of the review leather, letters. Either Anna or I can answer specific questions.
I do have a question. In terms of the ADA access from the parking lot to the building. I believe it should be a last resort to have that path where the vehicles are driving. Have you investigated? To, you know, provide sidewall going along the north side of those ADA spaces. Spaces and then turning to the, I guess, turning south, east towards the entrance. Instead of having it in, you know, where the vehicles are driving.
We have looked at it, it may be possible with some modifications. Really, the, the concept that we presented here. We sort of borrowed from what you see in a lot of the large shopping centers such as, you know, the big box stores, Walmarts and things. Which have designated painted lanes for ADA accessibility. So we've not, we've not taken any alternative beyond this to a detailed design, but we have considered it.
I would prefer, and this is just my opinion, if, if I was in that, I prefer to have the sidewalk. It looks like there's some grass area where a sidewalk could fit.
There are some, there are also some, some grading issues associated with putting a sidewalk outside of that parking area. The other thing to keep in mind too is, or perhaps at least that. The volume of traffic, both foot traffic and vehicular traffic. Considering the level of vehicle ownership amongst the residents and where the staff are likely to park to access the facilities that they service. It's going to be pretty minimal and again, far below what, what you'd see at a Walmart or a Target store where similar configurations exist.
I, Bill, if I could, could I, could I speak to this topic a little?
Certainly.
Okay, and Bill Kik and Anna Hatton, you haven't received our updated letter. We have changed our stance on the overall parking calculations for this campus. We've come to a conclusion that the, and now agree with you. That the parking calculations for the campus, at least for now. If it's outside of the scope of what you're proposing for this project, it is grandfathered. So at this point, we're treating your calculations for parking requirements as compliant with the zoning orders. However, this is a particular issue with us. We do have a zoning section that does speak to providing safe pedestrian access from the parking stalls to the entrances. And on top of that, there is a question about whether striping an area off infringes into the driveway aisle. Which means you may have, you may be deficient on your driveway aisle width. So our, we think that currently, if you maintain this design. We have zoning issues with this. So we would prefer to see, prefer this to see off of the, out of the driveway aisle area. And move back to a more traditional and protected spot that you would normally associate with a sidewalk type of access. And quite frankly, I don't think you see this kind of layout in any shopping center in South Whitehall. It's not something that we would generally look favorably toward.
Would the township's position on this have any bearing on any of the existing? Similar situations are on a site similar to the ones on the southwest of this parking lot. And I guess the only reason I ask is because they do, they do have this situation elsewhere and it is, it has been effective so far. You know, it's been safe for the residents. While we fully appreciate the township's position, it's important to recognize that Diakon doesn't want to create an unsafe condition for its residents either. And that this, this has been effective elsewhere on the property. Notwithstanding any of the big box conditions that may or may not exist in South Whitehall Township. And I, and I don't know that for a fact, Greg, so you may be right.
Yeah, I think if we go with, to be consistent with the parking calculations. If you're not proposing any work in the area of the other site, it would be grandfathered.
Greg, if we were able to get the driveway width with the striping area, would that be adequate? Or does it have to be separate from the, I want to say elevated or separate from the pavement?
Um, I think what we may be looking for, if it's possible to move the island structure. Of the spaces and the two islands down further to ensure that if you have sufficient driveway width. If you count the striped area as not being driveway aisle. That would help. I think it would also help if you installed bumper blocks. And then move the parking spaces backward to shift the protected area to the. Between the parking space and the grass strip, that would also help. And certainly if you can manage an elevated location, that would help most. Because that would provide a sort of curving buffer which would help keep any errant vehicles from easily traversing into the ADA accessible walkway.
Okay, I think with this option, we can, we can resolve that and get through a remix of it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the? From the Planning Commission? Okay, opens up to the floor, any questions or comments?
I'm not seeing any in the chat box. Callers?
It is open to callers.
Going once, going twice? No callers.
Okay. Hearing other comments. Greg? Go ahead.
You know, if they're going to work out that ADA route with the, with engineering and staff. Is there really anything else outstanding that needs to be looked into? I guess that's a question for Greg.
I'll let Tony speak to that.
Tony. No problem, thank you. We can recommend engineering approval if both those two zoning issues, the parking and the aisle are satisfied to the township. Then there are no other real engineering issues. Obviously, we have our comment letter that will work with the applicant and engineer with. But nothing that we foresee changing the layout or creating problems.
Okay. Greg, is the word, do you need to add any wording for the, developing the?
I would add one more condition, 15th condition, that. That the protected access on the. Do we want to name this parking lot? The parking lot directly west of the building? Be resolved to the satisfaction of staff? Prior to it being sent to the Board of Commissioners for approval.
Okay. So that's the condition 15?
That's condition 15.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
That's my Brian, a second?
A second.
Let's see, Dave Wilson, okay, a roll call vote?
Okay, David Dunbar.
Hi.
Ryan Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Moe Queen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Proposed parking lot improvements for 798 Hausman Road, major plan 2020-105. Greg?
Yep, that's a lot of pages to flip through. All right, this is an application to further develop the property located at 798 Hausman Road. The plan proposes the construction of a new driveway aisle and the elimination of 13 parking spaces. Stormwater management, oh, stormwater management improvements and the installation of a new water line. On a 0.181 acre portion of the 6.072 acre site. The subject property is Zoned IC1 Industrial Commercial 1 Special Height Limitation. Lehigh Valley Health Network is the owner and applicant. The Community Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners. Subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. A completed waiver from time limitation to review the plan is required if revised plans are not submitted by January 25th, 2021. And, and deemed to be sufficiently clean for presentation to the Board of Commissioners at or before their February 17th, 2021 meeting. The conditions are, one, if deemed to be necessary subdivision improvement, security, maintenance and indemnification agreements acceptable to the township be executed. That sufficient security in a form acceptable to the township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws presentation, presentation no further than 60 miles from the township's office. And evidence of necessary insurance coverage be provided to the plan before being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed the satisfaction of township engineer. The comments of the township engineer as contained in his review letter dated December 14th, 2020. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the township water and sewer engineer. The comments of the township water and sewer engineer as contained in its review dated December 14th, 2020. December 14, 2020. Four, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor, as contained in his review dated July 30, 2020. Five, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department, the comments of the department, as contained in its review dated December 11, 2020. Six, that the applicant obtains a review from the LVPC prior to the plan being presented by, to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Seven, that the applicant obtains a letter from LCCD approving the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan pursuant to Section 31239E of SALDO. Eight, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a letter from PADEP approving the Sewage Facility Planning Module or exemption thereto. Nine, that the applicant complies with the September 15th, 2020 Recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. Ten, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. Eleven, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township, township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. And twelve, that the plans are to be revised and deemed clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. The soft deadline for planning commission action is January 18th, 2021. The hard deadline for Board of Commissioners action is February 17th, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Can you hear from the applicant?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, Fidel, you're not coming across.
Oh, how about now?
There you are.
Good evening, I'm Fidel Gonzalez with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And with me tonight is Stacy Hogan, who is the, the contact for the project for Lehigh Valley Health Network. And we've been working with staff through these comments and we think we're at a point where we would appreciate to move forward.
Okay. And you're okay with all the conditions?
Yes, on behalf of the applicant, they agree with the conditions that were proposed by Mr. Adams.
Okay. Any questions from the planning commission, comments?
I move that we recommend approval.
Let's, let's get, we have to get comments from the floor, questions from the floor first.
I'm a board member and I recommend approval of the most, of the plan.
Okay.
All right. I, I see no comments in the chat box right now. Shall we open it up to callers?
Phone lines are open if you'd like to comment on this project.
Going once, going twice? I have one question for Fidel. And I know we talked about this early in the process, but with the township borderline and a, a meter pit is being relocated to the building. Is that still part of this project? At this point, the water and sewer engineer is looking for some sort of confirmation that we are making sure that is part of this project and to be secured. So I'm just asking what your take on that is?
Yeah, I can, I can defer that to Stacy, but it is my understanding that if your question is, is the water meter that's planned to be inside the building still planned? Then I do believe so, but if Stacy can hop on, maybe she can update us. We can't hear you, Stacy, if you are talking.
Do you know if she called in?
Yeah, she called in, she sent me a note that she was on the line.
All right, let me unmute the callers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Yeah, so Fidel's correct. We plan to move forward with that project. It, I, DiCon, we'll probably end up doing it in the spring when the weather gets better. We just quoted everything out now, so we're ready to move forward. We just, obviously, we'll probably wait until the weather's better.
Okay, very good. So, any, any issues that the township would require for security or agreements and such? Will, will, that'll be taken care of with this project and in theory should be ready to go when you're ready to actually install.
Yeah, yep, you got it.
Great, that's my only question.
Okay, good. David Dunbar? Do you have, have a motion?
I, I move, we recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
By Alan, a roll call?
Okay, we have David Dunbar?
Aye.
Ryan Height?
Aye.
Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Phil McNair?
Aye.
Matthew Molequeen?
Aye.
Alan Tope?
Aye.
And David Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Aye. Now?
Moving right along. Premier Center Luxury Apartments, conditional use 2020-601. Request for conditional use review. Greg?
Okay, let me get there. I do want to say that you guys have done an excellent job. You are almost a hour ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. This is an application to further develop the property located at 1151 Bulldog Drive. The plan proposes the demolition of the existing Parkview Motel and associated buildings, and the construction of thirty-five townhomes, twenty-five of which front on Crackersport Road, six three or four-story mixed-use buildings containing twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet of non-residential floor space, and three hundred and sixty apartments, nine hundred and nine parking spaces total, and stormwater management facilities, and two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-five square feet of open space, all, wow, that's wrong, all on a twenty-three point five five acre site. The subject property is zoned HC Highway Commercial and E&amp;D Commercial retrofit overlay. The property is being developed under the TND Commercial retrofit overlay district regulations. E&amp;B Partnership LP is the owner and applicant. I'm going to delve into this because I know we have a lot of people here. Previous township consideration, on January thirteenth, 2020, E&amp;B Partnership LP submitted a sketch plan application for Bizotti Parkview Major Plan 2020-101. At their October twenty-third, 2019 hearing, the zoning hearing board denied E&amp;B Hotels partnership for appeals for all of the following. A use variance from Section 35024C13 to allow multifamily residential apartments as a standalone use, a variance from Section 35048D4D from the maximum, from the minimum parking requirements for an apartment building, a variance from Section 35048D3 from the parking requirements of the apartment as part of a mixed-use building, and a variance from three section, sorry, Section 35048C13 from the maximum height requirement within the HC District. Going backwards in time, well, back from there, the zoning hearing board granted a number of special exceptions for special outdoor events, generally for dog shows at the hotel. Reviewing agencies' comments, township engineer, the comments of the township engineer are contained in Mr. Scott Pidcock's review dated December 11th, 2020. His comments pertain to plan detail, traffic, and vehicular and pedestrian circulation. The comments of the township water and sewer engineer are contained in Mr. Jason Newhart's review dated December 14th, 2020. His comments pertain to the submission of information related to new versus, new versus existing flows for water and sewer purposes. Comments of the Public Works Department are contained in Superintendent Herb Bender's review dated December 11, 2020. His comments pertain to snow removal and plan detail. Ms. Laura Harrier's comments are contained in her review dated December 8, 2020. Her comments pertain to general conditional use standards within Section 35018B and the specific conditional use standards within Section 35031F3 and 35048. Comments of the LVPC have not been received at the time of this writing. The Public Safety Commission reviewed the plan at its December 7th, 2020 meet, meeting, and made no comments regarding the proposed use on the property. And finally, the EAC Environmental Advisory Council has not reviewed the plan due to the lack of quorum available. The department, the Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies to develop conditions for, of approval for the application. Should the applicant require, require additional time to answer planning commission's questions, a waiver from the time limitation to review the request shall be required. The planning commission's hard deadline date for action is December 19th, 2020. The Board of Commissioners' hard deadline date is January 18th, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Can we hear from the applicant?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I am Jim Preston, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and first of all, good evening. The, we, I have several people here this evening. We have our, our engineer, Kevin Markle, he's with Barry Isit and Associates for Traffic Engineering. We have Mr. Rob Hoffman. We also have a, a representative from our architect and planning firm, that would be Mr. Seth Shapiro, and a representative of the owner is on here as well. So I think we can get into a, a pretty fruitful discussion here this evening. The plan that you see on the screen there was, at least with respect to zoning and SALDO, I believe, is a clean plan. We're here for a conditional use review. I did hear what Mr. Adams said about the time constraints, and we know that the planning commission is just seeing this now for the first time. We're, we're, we're not expecting a recommendation this evening. So, Mr. Adams, you'll be getting what you need to, to allow this to happen. Okay? I guess a good place to start is with an explanation of the site and how it's laid out. Seth, are you somewhere? Here?
I, I am here, I am here.
Very good. Then what I would ask that you do is first introduce yourself to the board, and then if you would, introduce the plan and explain what, what it is that we're trying to accomplish here.
Sure, my name is Seth Shapiro, I am a principal and director of planning and urban design for a firm called Barton Partners. We are a forty-five person firm located in Norris Sound, Pennsylvania, and our specialty is mixed use and multifamily, both infill and greenfield redevelopment, both urban and suburban. I have a, I am both trained as an architect and a planner, and I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from the University of Miami School of Architecture and a Master's of Architecture in Urban Design from the Harvard University Graduate School of Design. The plan here is a mixed-use plan utilizing the, the TND overlay as mentioned. The way it works is, and the way the TND plans generally work, are that they, they pay special attention to the spaces in between the buildings. Buildings instead of sort of fronting on parking areas, front on streets. We still have parking, but the parking is relegated to behind buildings, so buildings have fronts and backs. And so the way this plan works is if you come off of Bulldog Drive, you enter into what is a sort of a more formal entry, there's a roundabout there, and there's a central boulevard that the plan is organized around, and that is coming up and to the, to the, to your right. That central boulevard has actually almost, almost all of the buildings fronting on it, right? We have buildings A through, Building A, Building B, Building C1, C2, C, and C3 off front on not only this, this boulevard that has parallel parking, a planted median, sidewalks on both sides, but also sort of terminates in a central square, central open space, what we're calling an active open space. And that again is framed by these buildings, so all of these buildings front onto that, and their ground floors have active uses. There were a series of, of retail or commercial uses, but also we've actually put some of the parking for the community inside those buildings as well because the footprints are rather large. So that's how sort of the centerpiece of the plan works. Up, up, up on the other drive, up on Crackersport, in sort of homage to what's across the street, which are single-family homes, we actually have townhomes. So the scale of the buildings dropped there, they're just three-story buildings. They're also considered rentals, they'd be pretty high-end rentals because they have their own garages that are connected to the units. They face onto Crackersport Road, as is actually required by, by the ordinance, but they, you know, they, they help to create that sort of more pedestrian-friendly experience along, along Crackersport. And indeed, unlike the, the multifamily buildings, which are set back three hundred feet plus more from Crackersport, they are of course, of the lower scale. Lastly, you'll see that there's a, you know, a series of different open spaces that are sort of distributed around the site. There are a series of requirements with the ordinance in that regard. We like to utilize those distributed open spaces just to create place. And you can see that main one is, is in the middle, but we also have a dog park. You can actually see little courtyards inside Building A and Building B, those are amenity spaces that are actually up on a second level that are sort of reserved just for the residents themselves. Again, you know, the, I, I think the, the plan rendering essentially speaks for itself, but if anybody has any questions on the overall design approach, I'd be happy to answer them. One last thing I just wanted to mention is that you'll notice that at the entry point of the plan, there's a lot of open space, and that's because we actually have a high tension wire easement there where we can't actually put any vertical construction. So that's sort of what the governor of where buildings could actually go on this. So with that, I will shut my mouth and happy to answer questions or continue on with the, with the hearing.
Okay, thanks, Seth. Mr. Chairman, I guess it's probably best to turn it back to the planning commission at this point. I'm sure you have questions and, and and we'll wait to hear those.
All right. Questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, um, I see there's a fair amount of open space. If you could just sort of give a brief overview of how those different open spaces, then the intent of how they'll be used. I noticed the one on like the bottom right, it looks like it has some more different colors on it, not quite sure what.
So, a-actually, it's interesting, that's actually a playground area, we, at the ground level of, of buildings D3 there, we're actually proposing a daycare center. And so that is sort of a protected outdoor play area for that daycare center, and that's, you know, we don't know what the specific design of that playground's going to be, and I think those multiple colors are sort of evocative of the, the sort of the different sort of padding that they, you know, that special material that they have on playgrounds. And actually, you can see, if you look really carefully, we have a sort of a playset rendered in plan there.
How about, um, it looks like Building A and Building B has some areas?
So, sure, so what, what we need to be specific about is both those, those spaces on Building A and Building B that are inside those courtyard are actually elevated up a level, they're up on the second level. So they're elevated courts because they sit on top of some podium level parking that's within those buildings. So there, it's almost like a green roof, really. In Building A, it's, it's just a, a green passive courtyard, sort of more of a contemplative space that would be used for the residents of this community. Building B? Um, building B, what you actually see there is instead of actually parking in that podium space, we're actually proposing an indoor swimming pool. Um, and so you actually can see a skylight that actually went down into that, that pool area. But it's also a private court. Um, and then, then, you know, the other thing is we have the central open space and we've, you know, we, we're not, I, I don't know that we're completely resolved on what that, the specific landscape solution is going to be for that, that central square there. Um, but you know, it's relatively large, um, and we think it can accommodate a, a bunch of, um, different sort of uses, but we also want it to be relatively flexible. Um, lastly, you see a dog park behind building C four. Um, one of the things about luxury, high-end, uh, rental communities who stays, they're all pet friendly. Um, and so we have that dog park. We actually have, um, a dog washing station and actually even a groomer, um, proposed for the ground level of, of these buildings as well.
Um, question I have in, in terms of the, the large active open space. Will that be, um, you know, available for, you know, residents of the township to go there, or is it just for this mixed use development? Um, now, the first thought that comes to my mind is, um, you know, the promenade shops, they have some plaza areas and people like to go there and take their kids there. Um, and sometimes they, you know, they would have Santa there and whatnot. Some kids could take pictures with them. I'm just trying to figure out what the intent, if that's just for this mixed use development, or if it's, you know, something that, you know, the entire township might be able to take their kids there or, you know, have recreation.
So there are certainly no restrictions, right? I mean, it's not a gated, uh, community. It has commercial uses in, in each of the buildings has some, some kind of publicly accessible commercial use. Um, so I don't think there's any reason why those ground level open spaces couldn't be, um, enjoyed by the, specifically the one in center. Um, I would, I think the dog park would most likely be fobbed and is, is maybe, may be reserved, uh, for residents. Obviously, the playground space that's for, at the daycare, it obviously has to be a secure space. Um, but the rest of the open space, I mean, it's not, not, we, we're not seeing it as fenced in or, or or restricted in, in any way.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, can you, uh, speak to the internal circulation of the traffic, especially coming off of Crackers Port? It looks like it comes down to a one-way street and kind of and what your thinking is behind that. Thank you.
Sure. Um, you know, some of the, a- a- as I mentioned before, the, in a, in a TND, um, a traditional neighborhood design, you know, the, the design of the streets, that public realm is everything. You know, there's a difference between a street and a road, right? But we have internally here our streets, um, with, you know, parking on one side. So the, so the way the, the traffic works around that, that active open space is, is a one-way loop. So if someone was coming down Crackers Port, they wouldn't be from Crackers Port coming down south into the site. Um, they wouldn't be able to actually go all the way down to the daycare. They have to circulate around the park. Um, the same is true for if you're coming in from, from Bulldog, you come into our central boulevard, you turn right by the, um, the active open space. And then turn left, um, in front of building C three where there'd be a drop-off space, um, for the, for the daycare. You know, the, the one-way streets with the parallel parking on both sides, um, is, is great for keeping speeds way, way down. Um, also for keeping sort of pedestrian crossings, um, nice and short and safe. Um, so that was, that was the thought behind, um, that traffic circulation.
Is, is that one way in front of the daycare? Is that necessitated because of a drop-off? The daycare, because I, I know, um, it's brought up earlier, but, um, daycare is now, uh, uh, at least to my experience, you, you know, we, we have to park and we'll bring our child in and sign them in for, you know, safety, security reasons. Um.
It, it is for drop-off. I mean, there's, there's, there's parallel parking on both sides of that street. Um, which is, which is, is most likely during drop-off and pickup times going to be reserved for that use. Um, and that's, you know, that's why it is that, again, it's that one way to keep those, those speeds and, and, and not whatnot down. Actually plenty of, of on-street parking there. It's got to be at least twenty spaces, um, along that stretch and a lot, also south of building B.
Would those spaces be like signed for drop-off only, uh, like a time limit or?
Yeah, my, my guess is they would. I mean, we could certainly do something like that, you know, during certain times of day. Um, you know, Monday through Friday from, you know, six AM to, to, to nine AM, you know, with their reserve for drop-off.
I do have a question about that, um, power line easement. Um, so I know sometimes there, these power utilities have some heavy restrictions. Has, has that been investigated in terms of, um, you know, right in the parking under it and everything?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm going to defer to, to our, to our civil engineer on that, but in general, um, you can't build anything, you can't build a building, um, in the easement. Um, and then there's a certain setback, um, from the lines themselves where you can't actually have a vertic, even in, like a tree. Um, and we're, we're, we're meeting that, um, those restrictions.
Do you have any sketches or renderings that you could show us to give us a sense of what the, uh, buildings will really look like?
Uh, why, yes, we do. Um, do we have those available? My team?
Yeah, they should be. Greg, I think they were sent in, I believe.
Yeah, the, part of the designs, uh, uh, manual.
Right. Actually, if, if you all have a set of, of that design manual in front of you, you're in there.
Can you pull that up, Greg?
Actually, someone else is controlling this. I'm not quite sure if it's Dave or Tony.
Well, we, we submitted a design manual that has that information in it. Was that given to the Planning Commission? Do they have that?
Yes. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's on the packet.
Yep, that's at the end of the packet.
I think it would be, I think it would be helpful if you could pull it up on the screen now that if, if someone who's controlling that can do that, it'd be helpful for everybody to see.
Sure, yeah, I, I'm controlling. This is Tony Tellarita. I'm controlling now. I'm looking for the document. If, uh, Dave has it available, I can switch over, but I'm looking for the document now, Tony. I apologize.
Is it best to just grab it from the, uh, agenda packet?
Yeah.
That's a big, yeah, that's not a bad PDF.
Sure, what page is that on?
Uh, it's toward the end. Um, yeah, what are we starting at here?
Okay, I, I think I got it.
It's actually the very end, Greg. It's the last document.
Yep. Two pages.
Hey, he's found it.
Got it, Tony?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Can everyone see it?
That's it.
Yeah, just, uh, shout out page numbers if, uh, i- if, if you want to see something specific, that's fine.
So the, so actually, if you could just scroll down a little bit, this is about the cover page. And a- a- as you guys, I think you're aware that part of the, the ordinance requires us to put together this design manual, um, to meet certain, um, requirements of, of the TND overlay. Let's keep going. I don't want to go through the whole thing. Um, we can go through, and the rendering for requests, though. I think they're, keep going down. There you go. There's one. Um, so this is a rendering. Oh, go back.
All right.
Actually, if you can leave it on this, this is good. I mean, if these aren't, aren't too small. Um, the top rendering, one on the upper left, is on that central boulevard, um, looking towards, uh, with, with building C one and, and, and C two on your left, um, and building A on your right. Um, and then the one on the, uh, lower right here is looking down as on that entry street from Crackers Port, looking at the townhome. You can see the wide planting strips, the five-foot sidewalks, you know, the real sort of, an homage to real sort of pedestrian friendly, uh, vibe. Go to the next page if you'd like. So let's go back up one. Yeah, there we go. So the, the view here, this is sort of a close-up of that internal, uh, park. It's actually referred to as a close um, in the, in the guidelines packet. Actually, frankly, not a term I'm, I'm one hundred percent familiar with. Um, but I, I believe that it refers to sort of a central park-like space that is, that is surrounded by, by, um, some streets. So this is actually looking, um, from the north to the south. Um, and the building actually with the daycare would be the building on, in the upper left of the rendering itself. Um, but you can see that buildings have three levels, um, of, of residential above the, the, sort of the ground level.
Could you, um, speak to the, the mixed use aspect? Like, um, what, what the potential non-residential, um, aspects could be, like, like a coffee shop on those first floors or, you know, what the potential is?
That, that's exactly right. Um, you know, it, it is a, there's a coffee shop. Um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have actually my, my program chart in front of me about the specifics of the, the sizes, but they're relatively small spaces. Really for sort of the more of the mom and pop type of, of, um, of retail use that would really serve just the, the, the neighborhood. Um, and, and this particular, um, community. I mean, we don't, we don't view this as a sort of a destination. Um, with, you know, lots of, um, active, you know, restaurants and whatnot. I think that there, there's, there's smaller spaces.
Yeah, we had, we, we had identified probably the spaces as being anywhere from two thousand to thirty-five hundred square feet. Basically, basically on the, on the ends of the first floors. Uh, some professional office, um, that's just some business, you know, maybe a, a dry cleaning type of, uh, business sandwich shop, uh, thing, things of that nature. They're on the, they're on the ends basically of all, of all the mixed use buildings. Serve, and their parking, the parking that serves those businesses would be, um, in the middle of those businesses on the first floor of the building.
Thank you.
Just curious, uh, since you are talking apartments and townhouses and so on. But how many people would you expect to make their residence in this project if you sold out a hundred percent?
Um, that's, that, you know, it's, it's a tough question to answer. Um, uh, do, Tony, do we, do you remember that the specific mix of ones and twos?
Yeah, I think we were probably on this, on the sixty, forty, or even fifty, fifty range of, um, of between ones and twos. So you could, you know, with three hundred and sixty apartments, you could have, what, you know, seven, seven hundred and, you know, be anywhere between six and seven hundred perhaps people. Um, the townhouses, the townhouses are going to, there's thirty-five townhouses and they're going to be larger, larger type, you know, uh, townhouses with two-car garages, probably three-bedroom, uh, three-bedroom type, two-to-three-bedroom types. I mean, you could have, you could have, um, you know, retirees here, moving here. You could have, um, um, millennials, you could have, uh, you know, young couples living here. So I think you'll have a mix, a mix of a community here. Okay.
All, all put together, you'd have, I guess, uh, about three hundred and ninety-five dwelling units in the place?
That's correct. Yeah, three hundred and sixty apartments and thirty-five, uh, townhouses.
And, uh, your whole property is about twenty-three and a half acres, if I remember correctly?
That's correct.
And of course, if I divide dwelling units by acres, I get about, uh, sixteen point eight dwelling units per acre. That, uh, strikes me as a little bit dense.
We're, we're within the zoning parameters. I can, I can assure you that.
It still strikes me as dense. Okay.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, in, in terms of traffic, um, mentioned there's some level of service drops. Um, there's discussion about, um, the, the traffic timing at, at some intersections and whatnot. Uh, can the, the applicant's traffic engineer go over, um, you know, what was in the traffic report and, um, discuss, discuss that?
Sure. Uh, good evening, Rob Hoffman with Traffic Planning and Design. Yeah, we, we did, uh, we did a traffic study. We scoped that traffic study with your engineer prior to the commencement. Um, got their concurrence on the scope. The intersection, or the, um, the study included, I believe, uh, seven off-site intersections. Um, the, you mentioned some level of service drops. There are primarily where that, where that's occurring is, I think, where you, where you'd expect it at, at the three oh nine Ridgeview intersection. Uh, there, there were some, you know, some service drops, which, which basically equates to just a, you know, a little bit longer wait time. Um, you know, comparing, uh, the, the base condition and the, uh, the build-out, the build-out condition. Um, as far as trips and traffic generation, we're projecting two hundred and ninety-five AM peak trips and two hundred and ninety PM peak trips. The one thing with respect to that, that I did want to mention, we, we kind of touched on this as we were talking about the commercial uses, the neighborhood-type commercial uses in those buildings. Um, we, the, the way we analyze this is, is conservative. Um, we, we basically took the retail uses and ran the trips using the ITE shopping center classification. So, you know, that, that's going to result in, in a more conservative use. Um, you know, as was, as was discussed earlier, we're not envisioning that, you know, the retail component to this being a destination-type component. It's, it's really kind of ancillary to, you know, to the, to the residential component of, of the site. So, you know, that, those, I, I just say that because I think the, the, you know, the trip counts, again, they're conservative, um, which is, you know, generally what we, what we like to look at, but, um, you know, I thi- I think those, I think those counts are high. And then from a, from a daily trip perspective, this really, over the course of a day, if, if, if the hotel on the site were, were operating, you know, were fully functional and operating as a typical hotel would, um, the trip count really would be awash between with, with what we're proposing versus a hotel.
All right. Can you go over the, uh, the property fronts on Crackers Port? And it looks like a portion of Bulldog. Can you go over the, uh, improvements you're, you're proposing, proposing along your property frontage and then, um, you know, a- any, um, you know, thoughts in terms of, you know, the, the level of service drops? Um, and, um, other intersections, what, you know, you as a traffic engineer, what you would recommend or, you know, what your thoughts are?
Yeah, um, the fir- the first part, I thi- I think for the first part of your question, I'm going to ask, uh, Kevin, the, the, our, our site civil engineer to jump in and, and handle that with respect to the frontage improvements.
Yeah, sure. Kevin Markle with Barry Isit and Associates. Um, regarding frontage improvements, um, we are just connecting to Bulldog at the main entrance where the roundabout is. Along Crackers Port Road, we're proposing to dedicate the additional right-of-way, um, to bring the half width in accord, in, in accordance with the township ordinance. We'll be providing sidewalk along the entire frontage. Obviously, as we move forward into land development, we'll get into street trees, um, and things of that nature in accordance with the ordinance. The township does require the cartway width of Crackers Port to be forty feet total. The existing road is thirty-six feet, um, curb to curb today. We had, we have asked for a waiver to not widen the road for that additional two feet since it is a standard width pretty much all the way along Crackers Port, you know, out to Spring House. Uh, it is curbed today. Uh, it is curbed today. Um, so we were looking to not widen just for two feet, but otherwise we are bringing the rest of the road frontage up to township ordinances.
Can I also just add, add to that, that um, just to support the, the notion of not widening Crackersport? Adding two feet width, adding, adding two feet width isn't going to increase its capacity. It's only going to increase the speed with, with which people drive, um, which is a safety.
Thank you. And just, um, I guess Rob, the, the level of service?
Yes.
There, if, could opine about that?
Yeah, sure. It, it's primarily, primarily the movement um that's, that's troublesome at, at the 309 Ridgeview intersection is, is the westbound left turn. Um, you know, we're all familiar with that. Um, that, that move will, you know, that, those, that the delays will increase for that left turn with the additional traffic and then queuing on that left turn. Um, you know, does, does get, get longer uh comparing the, you know, the, the no build and the build versus the build condition. Um, that intersection has been studied pretty extensively, you know, as, as most of you are aware, with, with other projects. Um, you know, there, there's, there's certainly limitations there to, to what can be done. Um, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know that there's a, you know, that there's an easy fix for the increase in that delay for that movement, particularly, uh, you know, ju- just with, with the, you know, the, the configuration of that intersection. I mean, it's, it really just kind of comes down to, you, you know, there's gonna, there's gonna be some increases and delays for that movement.
So does, you know, timing of the lights, would that um alleviate any delays?
No, I, and, and that's, that's, you know, we, we look at that as, as part of the analysis. We, we already kind of, kind of baked that in, in if you will, where we, we optimize those signal timings to, you know, to kind of balance everything out the best we can and, and, and get it to operate the best we can. So, you know, but I mean, you're aware, there's, you know, there's only so much time in the signal. So you, you can only go so far with, you know, when you get into manipulating and massaging this time. So it's, you know, that's certainly something that would be done in conjunction with this, but you know, you're still going to see some, some increases in the ways for that, for that movement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the planning commission?
Yes, uh. The traffic count information, why were two of the counts from 2017 and the rest were 2020?
So we have to, obviously with, with uh the whole COVID pandemic, um, that's, when, when you say the, said 2020, we, we did, we did ATR counts, um, the two counts in addition to, in addition to manual counts. So where we had, where we had previous counts, we would use those because of the COVID pandemic. Where we did not have previous counts and we, we had to conduct counts in, you know, the current counts in 2020, what we have to do is we have to create an adjustment factor. Um, and we worked that through. That was part of our scoping that we worked through with your, with your engineer as far as how you make the adjustments. So basically kind of increasing the counts because, you know, given the whole pandemic, traffic counts as a whole are, are, you know, are down. So we, we look at that and you kind of work off of historical data, compare it to new data and then, and then work through adjustment factors. And, and we worked that through with, with your engineer and, and kind of all came to concurrence on, on what those would be. So that's, that's, that's the reason that you have the, the dates and the counts.
So the 2017 counts, you put a growth factor on those because, you know, there's a new, there's a new development that's being built uh by Toll Brothers on Walter Avenue that's after 2017. So I just wanted to make sure. We're capturing uh the correct data.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we put a, we put a growth factor on there and then we also get, we also factor those developments, those nearby developments that are proposed into the counts as well and, and inflate it based on those, those trip counts as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from the board, from the planning commission?
I, I will say that, um, you know, right now it's vacant. Vacant buildings attract nuisance, uh, bad nuisance. So, um, I, I, you know, I, I know some other options is flex warehouse space. So, um, you know, I, this may be preferable over, over a shop, shopping center or box warehouse. That's all.
Okay.
Have you considered a second entrance on the Crackersport Road? If you only show one?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I, I, I don't know that we, I don't know that we really need one. Um, I, I don't actually know it was ever considered. I mean, we've lined it up with the street across the way. Um, you know, at, on Crackersport. Um, doesn't seem to me to warrant um additional access point. Um, but you know, we can certainly look at that if, if that, if you feel.
And then you have a 90, there's that 90 degree. There's that 90 degree bend uh there at Crackersport too, which you have to be mindful of in placing, in placing another access point. Plus, plus there's intersection spacing that's required. So I think lining it up, lining it up as we've done now and then with that 90 degree bend in Crackersport there, I think it may, it may, it makes it a little problematic to even introduce another access point. And I'm not sure what good it would really do.
Well, just from siphoning traffic off of Bulldog. You know, some people may choose, if they choose to live there, they may choose to go, go along Crackersport and still the north on Bulldog to get wherever they're going. Gives you another way to spread traffic out, I think, but I'm not an expert.
Greg, could you do me a favor? Since this is a conditional use, can you just briefly uh explain to the public and everybody else that what um, what by right uses exist currently on that property?
Wow, okay.
Can, it, just, just briefly, I mean, I know it's probably in depth, but density.
Yes, it's not so bad. It, it is an HC zone. I can go with the, um, the base district is HC. So let me get there. The permitted primary uses.
Not like commercial.
Yeah, in the, in the HC zone, uh, you're looking at a lot of commercial stuff. Uh, arcade, bank, body art establishment, business and professional office, child daycare center, clubhouse and lodge, commercial car wash, uh, coordinate development. A slick, a flex space of 75,000 square feet or less, uh, believe it or not, forestry, uh funeral parlor, hotel, lumberyard, medical office, mixed use buildings, a motel, uh motor vehicle sales facility, a car lot, uh nightclub, an office park, personal service business, pet shop, recreation facilities, fast food and sit-down restaurants, retail sales, 75,000 square feet or less. A commercial or trade school, uh massage school, self-storage facility, uh service business of 75,000 square feet or less, a shopping center, veterinarian's office or wholesale sales of 75,000 square feet or less. Um, you can also have a B and B, a fire station or police station, a golf driving range, uh extended stay hotel, place of worship, public building, low intensity recreation as well. So those are the permitted uses within the HC zoning district.
Thanks, Greg.
Sure.
Could, could you then, um, or Greg or Jennifer, um, you know, go over what a conditional use is in terms of, it is a permitted law, requirements laid out in, in the ordinance that they have to meet. One of you could probably explain it better.
Sure, I'll take, I'll take that one. This is Jennifer Oldifer. Um, as David just mentioned, a conditional use is already a permitted use. Um, as long as the established criteria that are set forth in the zoning ordinance for the conditional use are met. Um, our zoning ordinance in section 350 dash 18 um lays out a number of objective criteria, um, basically standards that the applicant must show um in order to um basically prove their case for a conditional use. It's, it's an entirely separate process from a land development. That's not what the applicant is, is here for tonight. Um, this is simply just um for the use approval. Um, and they're doing so under an overlay district, which is the um commercial retrofit, if I have that correct. Right, Greg? Commercial retrofit?
Uh, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I did have an additional question regarding the Atlanta bus stop. Uh, have you had any preliminary discussions with Lanta and/or the Parkland School District about school bus service? This, uh, these apartments and townhouses?
We, we have not, uh, Brian. We haven't, we haven't had those discussions yet. Um, we do, we do plan on doing that. Uh, that was, that I think at least one of them, one of those comments was in the pit pack, it was in Anthony's letter. So, uh, we'll certainly have those conversations and that's going to be more about, uh, you know, stops and where they are and the, and what they look like. So we'll, we intend to have those conversations.
Yeah, dealing with my job, my paid job, uh, with Lanta sometimes, I, I don't think I'd be a big fan of that on a roundabout, but I could be wrong. So, okay, thank you.
Wherever, wherever they, wherever they would prefer the stop is what we'll put.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the planning commission? All right, we'll move on to the floor.
So what I will begin with is anybody that has put their name and address in the chat. Um, if there is just a comment written in the chat, I will not be reading those. Those will be preserved in the record. Um, but if you would like to speak, put your name and your address in the chat and I will start going through those names. Um, first we have Dave Torrey, 1351 Deerfield Drive. Floor is yours.
Okay, I'm on muted. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, a couple of comments on that. I would actually, lastly echo Brian's comments about, I was on vice chairman of Lanta and I think they would be concerned about that roundabout, especially with a 40-passenger bus. Um, and also having to go around the whole development to come back out. Um, nothing has to be done because the only Lanta bus stops are northbound and southbound on 309 and trying to cross 309 to get a southbound bus, uh, you know, extremely dangerous. But the other point I'm making on the, uh, first of all, the Bulldog Drive and the Ridgeview and the uh 309 North, 309 South, Housman Crackersport intersection. I think the only, that has, the intersection has to be completely rebuilt. I'm thinking about a traffic circle. Be a major project, but trucks can't, truck trailers can't get out of Ryder and Mack now. So, uh, you know, that has to be done. My, my second concern is the height, uh, height limitations was four-story buildings on Crackers, I mean, on uh Satchonya Road are totally out of character in every building there. Even the uh OAA building across the street. These buildings should be limited to maximum of three stories. Keep, number one, to keep in, we are the only township with four-story apartment building. Look at Upper McConge to the, to the west, over there behind a Jaguar given, or, or Allentown, or Whitehall. Although four stories are totally out of character. Um, the other concern I would have also is left turns from Crackersport to Spring House North. Very difficult to see there. In fact, Parkland school buses go into the uh, coming east on Parkland, uh east on Crackersport, go back into the school by the administration building and pull out near the synagogue. Now that has to be considered. Well, those are my, a lot of my comments. And again, for some of you who know me, um, I'm on a freight movement task force with Leo Valley Planning Commission. I've been in transportation 44 years and chairman of the transportation committee for the chamber locally and state and on a Penn Dot Rail Freight Advisory Commission. So I, I have a lot of background in transportation, planning and all, and management and operations. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
I, I do have some. Oh, sorry. I have some comments in my chat. Um, it looks like um, a resident had some technical issues. So it's like he messaged me, so I'll just read it out. Um, verbatim, uh, it says, "My name is David. I'm having tech issues and won't be able to speak. So can you please share? Consider." First, this is a lot of people and the peak trips are way underestimated given the number of people and apartments. And I'm greatly concerned that this will be incredibly dense and change the very character of the neighborhood surrounding. Um, also, since internal roads are designated one way, can you clarify whether the internal road from the development that connects to Crackersport is one that leads into the development or exits from the development onto Crackersport? Again, outflows onto Winchester are going to be devastating to this entire surrounding neighborhood.
Just, just for, just for clarity, um, those, uh, those roads are two-way. The road, the main road leading to Crackersport is, is a two-way direction and the road coming from Bulldog around, after you leave the roundabout is also two-way.
Correct. It's only one way around our central park. Right.
And, and behind the townhouses.
Correct.
Okay, I will move on to the next person that put a comment with their name and address. We have Lisa Gaveman, Gaveman, 4435 Meadow Lane, Allentown. The floor is yours.
Hello, um, I'd also like to echo what everyone else has been saying about the traffic being underestimated. Um, I think it's significant in regards to the amount of um people living in that, that area. And then we've had other additional very large projects that are going on. Um, I think especially for Ridgeview and 309, it's already difficult to get out at times, especially with Bulldog and the trucks that try and get out from Mac and Ryder. Um, additionally, we have the warehouses are coming across the street as well, as well as the senior. Um. I don't know what, what that is exactly, but the senior center that's going in where the old uh racquetball club was. So you're going to have, um, you know, nurses, aides, CNAs, staff going in and out of there as well as the, uh, the, the warehouses, um, in addition to this place. And, um, you know, a 2017 study, I don't think is going to take, going to necessarily give an accurate description of what's going on in 2020 or 2021 after the pandemic is over too. So that's basically what I wanted to bring up was the traffic and I agree with the four-story building being prob- problematic as well too.
Okay, the next name I have. Okay, the next name I have is Stephanie Miller, 4474 Farm Drive. Floor is yours.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I think my concerns, you know, echo a lot of what's already said, but I learned today too that the new access road that's going into the township building is going to be handling all the police traffic, you know, so all the police officers coming and going on calls, I understand, are now going to be coming in and out directly onto Ridgeview. Which I think, you know, I guess, I don't know if that's been considered in the traffic study, but I think that's an important factor, especially you know, if this intersection is backed up and, you know, is that going to impact like our, you know, public safety and the response times that, you know, we're expecting from, you know, our police officers. And again, I, I just, I do think that the number of residents that we're considering for this base is exceptionally high considering the traffic access that we have. And I think it's been said a couple of times, there's just really not a lot that we can do about changing, you know, where people can come and go from. And I'm, I'm also just exceptionally concerned about Winchester as middle school and high schoolers, you know, have their bus stops on that location. That's where my kids would get on the bus from for middle school. Starting next year, I have a child that'll be getting on there and it's already a very busy road that people drive very fast on. And I am not keen on the idea of directing people out of that development onto that road. You know, so I think some, some more solutions need to be thought out before this really moves forward. So that's, that's about all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have David Burke, 1436 Buck Trail Road.
Yes, thank you. I have a number of questions. One is the, the slope of the land, the way it is today at the Parkview Inn slopes pretty drastically down to the southwest corner. And I don't see any retention ponds or any drainage areas. How is that accommodated on this plan?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Right now, our concept is going to be, obviously, all of these internal roads are going to be curbed. We will have storm sewer inlets, storm sewers that will convey water to underground detention systems. So we will actually have a couple of underground storage systems underneath the proposed parking lots. Where they will either just be detention and storage for potentially a spray irrigation system, or they will also be an infiltration system as well. You know, we have to get into that testing as we move to land development. But we'll be capturing all the runoff from the buildings, the parking lots and managing our stormwater underneath the parking lots.
Okay, thank you. I have a few more questions. Another is the HZ zoning is a 35-foot-high limit. You're proposing four-story buildings, which I know have to be higher than 35 feet. Why do we need four-story buildings in that neighborhood? As Dave Torrey and others have pointed out, it's not consistent at all with the neighborhood. And in fact, someone said not even with other townships around us. And how many of these buildings are four-story and which ones are they?
So building A, actually, all, all of the multifamily buildings that are stepped back from Cracker Sport at least 300 feet, which is actually what the ordinance requires, are four-story buildings. And I also want to echo something about that.
Excuse me, I just wanted to remind you. Does that, every one of these multi-use buildings is four-story?
Correct. Except the townhomes.
So every building is four-story? Wow. Except the townhomes.
Except the townhomes.
It's like a little bit of Manhattan in South Wydall Township here in this residential neighborhood. Okay. The other question I have has to do with traffic. And as has been pointed out, the density of the development here is pretty severe when you look at the neighborhood. Density of people equal density of traffic. This is a limited in-and-out area, obviously. And the real constraint on Ridgeview in that left turn onto 309 is very severe right now. I would ask the traffic engineer, did he consider all the trucks that are going to be coming from the other side of Ridgeview onto 309 and trying to get down to 22? Because if you look at that, that's, that area too is very constrained. There's only room for one truck, one tractor trailer to sit there. And if you ever watch any of the tractor trailers that, that try to get onto 309 now, very often to try to make that turn, it takes them almost a half of a light, like, well, if not more. So we're going to be, we're going to be crowding the, the entrance to 309 from Ridgeview coming from the west and on the, I'm sorry, coming from the east with this new development and it's already crowded. And then we have the truck traffic on the other side, all vying to try to make the, the southern turn onto 309. That is going to be a mess. Can I ask the traffic engineer if he addressed the trucks on that other side?
Yes, that, that all gets factored into.
It gets factored into your study. Seems like your numbers are pretty low anyway. And it gets factored into the study that we're talking about.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is, this is Jim Preston. If you're going to ask him a question, you have to let him answer the question. And when he's done answering the question, you can ask him another question.
I appreciate it.
You don't need to insult him and, and impugn his integrity. You can have a different opinion. He's, he's committing some criminal.
Mr. Preston, you accused me of blowing smoke. I'm not doing anything but asking a question. Mr. Hop, did you answer my question?
I believe I did. You asked if the trucks, the trucks, yes, that they are factored into the analysis that we did.
Your study, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I believe that's the extent of my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name I have is Damarra Ritchie, 4424 Parkland Drive.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Um, so again, it's about traffic. You know, I live on Parkland Drive, which is one of, you know, the, the main roads in the neighborhood next to this proposed development. And I see the traffic less now because of the pandemic, but especially with morning and evening commutes. You know, I have two young kids and playing on the driveway frequently and we will see speeding be an issue every day. My mailbox has been hit twice and I've only lived here five years. So my concern is people are smart. They're going to realize it's going to be a nightmare on Bulldog, you know, getting onto 309 there. They're going to cut through the neighborhood and Winchester and Parkland. It's, it's just going to get worse. And I see the school buses already know to cut through the neighborhood to get easier access to 309. So I just, I wonder with the traffic studies being done, are you accounting for the increased traffic through our neighborhood?
Yes, as I said previously, when we were talking about the setup of the traffic study, we, we did a scope and worked that through with the township engineer. And yes, it does factor, like, for example, Winchester, it does factor traffic, you know, using Winchester Drive, using Cracker Sport going out that way. So it's not, it's not all traffic going out to 309. So it does, it does look at that and take that into account.
Hey, Rob, Rob, Jim Preston here. Just, just clarify for us, your work product, your traffic study, that's not something that just falls out of your head. You have to coordinate that with the township's engineer, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, so your assumptions and so forth in terms of what the, what the growth rates are and so forth, that's a collaborative effort. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
A next name we have is Lee Salt, 3731 Manchester Road.
Yes, good evening. Couple of questions to Seth and Tony. When you went before the zoning commission before, what was the number of residents that you had proposed?
I don't, I don't know what that has to do with anything, to be honest with you.
Mr. Preston, can I please ask you a question?
Not if, it's not if it's irrelevant, no.
It is relevant if you let me finish. Okay, here's, here's the point. Here's the one point I'm going to make concerning Commissioner Tokes' statement about the density. If, at 360 residents in this area, I counted the number of homes between Cedar Crest Boulevard, 309 and 22 and Walbert Avenue, and it was about equal. So all I'm saying is you're, you're basically doubling the amount of residents in the same area within that point. That was my point. Question concerning the townhomes. You said they were going to be rentals. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Can I ask the reasoning behind that?
I don't think there's any particular reason other than it's a, other than the majority of this site with 360 units is going to be a rental community. So the owner has decided to have the townhouses as rentals as well.
Okay. Cause, and if, if you, you stated before that Cracker Sport Road is, is at its widest it can be except for two feet. Is that correct?
What we said was that the current width is 36 feet wide, like pretty much the whole length of Cracker Sport now. There could be other areas where it's not, but for the most part, it's 36. And that the township ordinance requires it to be 40. So what we've asked the township, because we think if the 36 is plenty wide and go into a 40 would only increase speeds, I'm sure, along Cracker Sport, we just asked for a waiver to widen Cracker Sport that two feet on our side of the road.
Okay, but if you're going to have people moving in and out with rental units and not permanent residents, wouldn't the four feet allow a wider truck or a moving truck or something like that to be able to assist in moving in as compared to taking up more of the road? Because Cracker Sport in front of the high school or some of the, the middle school does not have parking on either side. It's basically two-road, two-lane road. There is no parking in there. It's not really wide enough for parking there. So.
I, I, I think that because the access to the townhouses are internal, it's internal access, meaning it's internal to the development. The garages are internal. There's, the only external to those townhouses are the front doors. So I suspect that when anybody moves into these townhouses, they're going to be moving in internally to the neighborhood. So any moving, any moving trucks or anything like that very likely would be coming from the back of the townhouse.
Okay.
I mean, there could be from time, I'm not, it's not to say that somebody, that, that, that somebody wouldn't be moving some items in along Cracker Sport. I'm not saying that, but I mean, I think like anybody else, when you move into, when you move into a townhouse, which I in fact do live in one. And when you do do that, you typically move in through the garage. That's, that's your typical, typical path of moving. So I suspect all that would be done internally into the development.
Okay, thank you. The, I, I know you said retail. I didn't see any spaces in here for, for like dumpsters and those kinds of things. I guess that will come later on. This is a conditional use.
No, it's on the plan. Now, there, there are, there are dumpsters, just so you know, there are, and so the whole planning commission knows. There are dumpsters identified on the plans now.
Okay, I just didn't zoom in far enough then.
Well, yeah, that's okay. And we would be fine tuning all those details during the land development process, but, but they are there now, just so you know.
Okay. And I see Mr. Shapiro's Boston influence in his design actually too.
I'm from Philadelphia.
So you had some Boston influence there.
I mean, not to, not to comment on the design because we're part of the design team, but I must say, you know, we're, we're very proud of this. I mean, we've hired Barton Partners from the very beginning on this project, even before we, we attended the zoning hearing board. And we hired them for a reason because this is, this is what they do. This is their specialty and, and we, you know, we're very proud of of this development that we've created here in the township.
My, my other comment is, is, and I don't want to beat the, the traffic horse to death, but because of the intersection at Ridgeview and 309 and the exit out of, in Winchester, I, I do have a concern about the Spring House and Cracker Sport Road intersection. That is not safe for pedestrians. It's very difficult, as was stated before, to make a left-hand turn. And if, if this development does go through, I think there should, there should be something in here that would improve that intersection greatly because it is concerning as, and just for township safety, that, that something gets done at that intersection. Thank you.
I can, I can touch, I can touch on that. We, we, within the study, we actually did look at and, and make a recommendation for that to be an always-stop controlled intersection. You know, to evaluate it at least. I mean, there's, there's, there's criteria, there's more criteria that has to be satisfied to do that. But that, that is, that is one of the recommendations that we made for that intersection.
I don't think an always-stop is a, I'm not a traffic expert, but because of, because of the way the 22 bridge is right there, I, I don't know how you could have an always-stop at that intersection. It is, it is problematic as, as the Holy High Valleys has not been thought through from day one that we'd ever be this big. That it is one of the intersections in the, in the township that is not good. I mean, residents go into the school district building a lot to make left-hand turns because they know not to make turns in, down at, at the intersection of Cracker Sport and, and Spring House. So they, they turn in there, they go down that area and they make a left-hand turn because they can see better. So you know, putting other stop signs on, on, on Spring House, I don't know if that's the best idea. All right, thank you.
And next up, we have David Bach, 1431 North 40th Street. I'm muted. No, I'm not muted. Sorry. David, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I was one who had submitted a previous comment. Thank you for the gentleman that read that. I now, thanks to my 12-year-old, have my mic working again. So thanks for taking my question. I have both comments and questions and I'll try to be quick. And again, they're somewhat similar to a couple of the things we've already heard. The traffic impact for this type of project, in my opinion, creates a, a nightmare, really. And I, I'm just calling it as I see it, so forgive me for being so straight. But in my opinion, it has not been thought through on the immediate impact that it will have on the surrounding neighborhood and community because for, had it, I really can't believe that this would be proposed. On paper, this sounds like a lovely, wonderful, beautiful idea. And I, you know, I'm looking at your rendering here and it's, you know, it looks, it looks very, you know, it's flattering and like a wonderful enhancement to the community, but in very practical terms, I think that this is anything but, for all of the reasons that have already been spoken. You know, in particular, from a traffic standpoint, you know, that left turn getting onto 309 is going to be a nightmare. It's already a nightmare. And now this is going to completely exacerbate the problem. Going through Winchester from, you know, exiting out of, of the development, right? Because people are going to recognize that 309 is not accessible and that, that exiting down onto Spring House isn't really the right path. The quickest path to get to like, you know, a Route 22, for instance, from this development will be eating down Winchester Road. And, you know, this is going to add just significant, significant volume into what are very quiet neighborhoods. The traffic problem is already an issue there and this is now only going to make it that much. an issue there, and this is now only gonna make it that much worse. Um, I would just comment on a couple other things. Um, and for one, I would like to get clarification, so I'm gonna ask a quick question, and I would love to hear the answer from uh, the gentleman who was representing the traffic study. Is it, um, if, if I'm not mistaken, I think I heard you say that the, the peak volume that you expected was 295 and that the, in the AM and 290 in the PM. Was that correct? Could you just clarify that for me?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct. So I'm just curious, forgive me, I'm, I'm, I'm only trying to get smart about this. You're, you're the expert. Um, when you expect 295 peak cars, um, you know, incremental to what is already there, which I assume it, you meant, you meant incremental volume. How are you arriving at that? And I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking for you to repurpose or regurgitate all of the assumptions. I'm sure it's well documented, but my question really lies in the fact that you're talking about 900 parking places within your, within your complex, and yet you somehow downgraded the, the traffic volume impact to 295. You know, with 360 rental apartments and 35 townholds, clearly you're gonna have multiple drivers with each of those properties, with each of those apartments or units, and so this 295 just seems grossly underestimated, in my, in my opinion. What's your response to that?
Sure. Um, what, what you need to understand with respect to that is when we, when we cite those numbers, that, that's one hour, so that's, that's a peak hour. So you have 24 hours in a day. That's one hour and that's the peak hour in the morning and the peak hour in the afternoon. Now, clearly, everybody doesn't leave their house at the same exact time to go to work, so there's, you know, traffic is spread out throughout the day, but what you look at is what's the highest of the hours in the morning, the highest of the hours in, in the afternoon, and that's, that's what you, that's, that's how we get to arrive at that number.
Okay, thank you, Rob, for, for clarifying that. It only now, only further reinforces my opinion that the number is grossly understated. I mean, I'm out at the corner, you know, in my neighborhood, every morning, I have one child who walks to school, um, you know, and another who's waiting for the Parkland school bus, and I'm standing out there in the corner between, you know, between bus stop, you know, peak times in the morning, between, you know, 7:30, 8 o'clock, 8:30, and I see the volume already. Um, and so I'm, I'm really concerned that the numbers you've estimated and that are, are communicating here are, are not doing, are, are not realistic and they're not doing it justice. But that's, again, that's my opinion and I'm, I'm allowed that. So let me, let me go on to the next issue. Um, and this is similar, but it's, it's something that hasn't been raised before. From Cracker Sport Road, if I understood you correctly, the exit, one of the exits from the development, of course, feeds out onto Cracker Sport Road, and that is directly opposing Winchester. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so as we've already established and heard many times, right, so many drivers are gonna get smart and they're gonna say no to 309, no to Spring House Road, and therefore they're gonna zoom through part, uh, through Winchester to get to the fastest, uh, you know, main artery, which is 22. They're gonna go right down Winchester. So from Cracker's point, Cracker's Port Road, from the point you exit the development and cross the street, entering the development on Winchester Road, there are up until Spring House Road. So right, so you drive north and then the road curves around at the playground, um, and it, it continues for another half a mile till you will reach a stop sign at Spring House Road. There are 50, five zero, homes, properties, whose driveways directly back out into Winchester Road. Um, in just this one mile stretch. So from Cracker's Port Road to Spring House Road, 50 properties. My property is actually one of them, and I wait every morning during peak rush hour and, you know, to, to back out. It's already a problem, and now you're talking about 900 additional parking lots, the bulk of which I believe are gonna be going down Winchester, um, or at least the significant volume, certainly more than 295. Um, and that's gonna only, again, exacerbate the problem. One other point I would like to mention is that there is a synagogue um, right across the street from your proposed complex. And I know that, um, some, some of the families in that community who are large families, mothers pushing strollers, walking to prayers on their Sabbath on Fridays and Saturdays and during religious holidays during the year. And I'm, of course, concerned, right, they're walking through the neighborhoods as well. You've got, of course, Spring House Middle School and all of the students, um, you know, coming out of school. But at any rate, the, the issue directly for the, I think it's called Chabad, so it's currently a quiet neighborhood, but I, I'm just curious, have you ever considered the increase in car volume specifically on this community? That was a question. I don't know who would have.
I, I mean, I, I'll handle, I guess this is a traffic related question. The, the answer would be yes, because it's, you know, that's, we, we look, take the traffic study and we, and we forecast the traffic onto the surrounding roadway, so it, you know, I guess, yes, it would.
Okay, I mean, have you ever interviewed or spoken with any representatives from that synagogue to talk to them about?
Mr. Bach, if I could just interject, please. Um, if, if we could just keep this to comments, um, this isn't a deposition. We're not questioning any witnesses here tonight, so, um, if we could just make the comments that you have and then try to move along so that we can keep this, this moving, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate your comment. Um, I will try to do so. I've been trying to do so. So I guess, you know, again, as you've heard already, I'm, I'm just gravely concerned about the traffic volume, and I think that, again, while this looks like a lovely idea on paper, you know, in practical terms, it's not, and I do believe in my heart that what's proposed is going to change the very fabric and very character of our neighborhood. And, you know, had I known that this was on the books, you know, when we purchased our home, I, I think we might have reconsidered, and, you know, with all of the development that's going on, as everyone has referenced already, this is just, you know, kind of, I don't know, icing on the cake, I guess. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to share some of those. I'm, I, you're welcome to respond. I'd love to hear further comments on anything I've said to reassure me, to make me feel more comfortable, but if you, that's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, we're, we're gonna, we have about another 15 minutes to go, so we're gonna keep the questions, comments to give everybody a chance. Limit them to about three minutes.
Okay. Um, and Chairman, we have some duplicate, so people that already spoke are showing up in the chat. Do you want to give them an opportunity to speak again, or should we just move on to the next new comment?
Next new comment.
Okay. We have Daniel Spiegel, 1314 either court.
Good evening. I will be brief. Um, I'm probably addressing my comment more to the planning commission. Um, I'm, you know, there's a lot of issues with traffic, and I'm gonna beat the dead horse. It, it, it needs to be beaten. There's a lot of issues with traffic, and I can see one solution or another being applied to many of the issues that have been brought up. I'm not sure that, that the remedies would be sufficient and that they would assuage concerns, not to mention that they would work well in practice. But the intersections where Bulldog and Ridgeview and Parkland meet, this is Nightmare City. Um, it is already pretty well backed up in the morning, and I could see that it would not be possible reasonably to come out of Parkland in the morning. I can see extreme backups there, and I, and I'm, again, addressing to the planning commission, I would hope that they would consider that if this development is to be built, that that area, that the, those, those two intersections where Parkland and, and, pardon me, and Ridgeview meet, and where Ridgeview and Bulldog meet, something needs to be done there. It cannot, it cannot, with this development there, something will have to be done there. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, next, we have Gail Delillo, 1326 Deerfield Drive. Gail, are you? Are you here? If she's muted. I don't see her in the list. We go on to the next. I have Susan Shortell. There's no address given. Please give your address and I'm, have the three-minute timer.
Okay, this is Susan Shortell. I live at 4405 Parkland Drive. I'm an original owner, uh, so I've been here since the seventies, and I've obviously seen many, many changes over the years. I, I can also attest to everything that everyone has said about the traffic issues. Um, living on Parkland Drive, I have had to, I've had the Spring House school buses coming up twice a day, about a dozen school buses for at least past 10 years. Why do they do that? Because if they went Cracker Sport to Bulldog, there is absolutely no way they could, those dozen buses could get out to continue on their afternoon runs. And, and yet somehow, you're talking, what is it, um, 300-some units with how many residents and how many cars per resident? And somehow, you think that all those cars now are, are somehow gonna magically get out to 309 or Spring House, or as, as David Bach said, all those Winchester with all the garages that back up to Winchester. Frankly, I have to admit, when I wanna go on 22, guess what route I go? Exactly what he's talking about. I go up, up Crest Lane, get on Winchester and go over that way to get to Cedar Crest Boulevard to get on 22 eastbound so that I can avoid 309 and Ridgeview. And, and you're talking La La Land here. You're not being realistic. I mean, I even had to laugh. I wanna ask the design of those townhouses. Where, are they three-story with the garages in the basement? Can somebody answer that question? The, the townhouses sitting on Cracker's Port. Are, is it a three-story with the garage entering into the basement level from the back? Is that the design?
Um, I, I can answer that. The, the, it's that they're three-story buildings, the garage is on the, on the first level, entered from the back. The front on the first floor is a den, is a, is a, there's a front door, a porch, uh, or a stoop and, and a den. On the second floor of the townhouse is a living kitchen dining space, open plan, and on the third floor are the two and three bedrooms.
So it's actually the, the front view from Cracker's Port is three stories then that you're seeing on Cracker's Port?
Correct.
I mean, that's not, I, I was not under the impression, I was under the impression that that wouldn't be, because obviously everything in that neighborhood is, is one-story or two-story, and now you're talking three-story buildings on the south side of Cracker's Port. Unbelievable. I guess that's all I, I have to say. Unbelievable.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Monica Hodges, 1707 Penns Crossing.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. Um, first of all, I want to tell you, uh, that I do think the development looks like a beautiful development. I just don't think it fits in the character of what South Whitehall is. We've had a lot of growth lately. We're going to continue to have a lot of growth. People aren't happy with it, and you, you can hear that right now. Unfortunately, you know, this is what our previous commissioners have zoned for. And, uh, I'm appealing to the goodwill of the developer. Can you decrease the height of those apartments? Can you decrease the density? Can you really listen to what people are saying, what the residents are saying? There's gotta be a compromise. And I'm just asking you to really listen to the residents who are gonna have to be here and live with this and live with the traffic and so forth. Lastly, to all of you on the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners, I don't envy you one bit. You have this zoning. You're hearing what your residents are saying. It's really sad. So good luck to all of you. I also have a question about the pandemic. Um, have you thought about these types of buildings and this development in terms of a pandemic? You know, people are moving home, living conditions are different. You don't even have to answer. It's just a rhetorical question, but there are a lot of vacancies, you know? Just, just a thought. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have Danielle Schuler, 4334 Valley Drive. Is she still on? Danielle? I'm not hearing anything. Um, we, we'll come back to you. It looks like Gail. Um, got your mic back on. Would you like to speak? Let me just read your address, 1326 Deerfield Drive. Gail?
Does, does that end it, Dave?
Hold on, hold on. Danielle is, Danielle is trying to call it.
Yeah, so what we do now is we open it to the phone calls. Um, so Danielle or Gail, if you'd like to call in, we can take you through your comments through the, um, phone. At this point, I'm looking for callers.
We only have a couple more minutes.
And I don't have any callers in there.
Okay.
One more just came in, Dara Ritchie, 4424 Parkland Drive.
Okay, we'll make this one the last one.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already spoke. Uh, I was just commenting. Yeah, I was, I disagree with what Monica was saying. I'm, I'm not, the complex looks beautiful. I think it's, it's, it, it's nothing against that. It's just the density and the traffic is the main issue, and I hope the developer hears our concerns and that there is some form of a compromise.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We will take them. And, um, I guess the next thing is we, it's a, take a motion, take this under advisement. Any other discussion by the board? We just have a couple minutes.
Like the, the, the call, the call, the call, the call, the call.
Hello? Hi, I'm sorry. I just joined on, on the phone. This is Danielle Schuler. I'm starting my laptop. Audio is not working. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. I know you're running out of time. Um, yes, I live on Valley Drive, about 300 or 400 feet from where the proposed townhomes are. I can actually see, uh, the motel from my kitchen sink. I live in a bi-level. So this is really close to me, um, and I, I'm just concerned like everyone else about the traffic, but you know, I have two young children that are under the age of six. I'm due in January with my third. And I left the Philadelphia suburbs for this very reason, five years ago, as soon as I had my first child, because I didn't want them growing up in an area with crazy traffic issues and density issues and not being able to ride their bikes and walk to the park. And I just wanna point out that the part- And I just want to point out that the park is on Winchester. It has become a huge gathering spot for our community, thanks to our neighbor Jill getting food trucks there on a weekly basis. And so many families walk with strollers and wagons. And I just get really nervous that this is going to change the beautiful character of our neighborhood that's really blossomed during the pandemic with having all these cars dump right out onto Winchester. I myself called the police when a car almost hit us on Winchester walking back from the park. And that's before having this whole development. It's already an issue with speeding there. So again, I just plead to Mr. Bizati to take this into consideration. You know, our development has put up with your current motel and the crime that has been associated with it. And I'm asking you to please take our consideration into your next plan with this. And to the Planning Commission, please make what's the best interest of the residents of South Whitehall Township. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's another caller, caller nine I opened up. Is this Gail?
Yes, this is Gail.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the mic on my computer wasn't working. So one of my questions was, how do the townhomes fall into the highway commercial zoning? How did that work with, there's no businesses under methos?
We're developing, we're developing the site as part of the commercial retrofit, TND retrofit, which permits, actually requires the types of housing. So as part of that commercial retrofit, TND retrofit, townhouses are permitted, as are the apartments and the mixed use.
So that is part of the zoning?
Yes, it's permitted as part of the zoning.
Okay. And then how, if they're four-story buildings and the zoning is a thirty-five-foot height limit, how do you, are you making these four-story buildings under that limit?
No, the townhouses have a thirty-five-foot height limit. So the townhouses will be thirty-five foot or less. The mixed-use buildings, if they are three hundred feet back from the residential zone slash use, are permitted to be four-story. So all of our, all of our six mixed-use buildings are greater than three hundred feet back and therefore are allowed to be at four-story.
I see. The traffic concern is also another big concern of mine. I'm avid walker in the neighborhood, and there's really not a lot of sidewalks. So you do have to walk in the streets. And there's a lot more people walking in the streets. So I am very concerned, especially on Winchester. Traffic does drive very fast, faster than the twenty-five miles an hour. And I do think that's a safety concern, as long as, as well as the buses from, on Crackersport and through the neighborhoods to pick up the children for school. And I was also curious if any kind of streets or traffic adjustments have to be made for this new development? Where does that fall under? Does the township end up having to absorb the cost? Or is that something that this new development will be absorbing? So that's a question. Either for the township or for the developer.
If the applicant wishes to answer the question, so be it. If someone just speak up. Otherwise, I think we're going to move on for the evening. And Bill, you can make that decision.
Okay. I think if the applicant has.
Jim Preston appears to be talking but muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. On behalf of the applicant, we have no comment on that, that last question.
Okay. All right, we're going to end the comment period here now. It is, as I said, it's ten-thirty now. I guess you weren't asking for a final answer. We're going to take this under advisement, so I guess take a motion to take.
Well, unless you want to, unless you want to recommend approval this evening. Otherwise, otherwise, yeah, I assume we'll be coming back. I'm just being facetious.
Let me confirm. You will, you will give us that waiver from the requirement to review the plan, correct?
That is correct.
All right, I'll send that to you tomorrow morning.
Send it to Tracy. You know Trace.
Yep, will do.
Can I make one final comment? I'd like to just make one final comment. There are a lot of informative comments from everyone today. And a lot of those comments speak to the conditional use standards, which is Section three fifty eighteen B, which the applicant has to demonstrate compliance with. So it would be helpful if the applicant does enter and provide a response for all those conditional standards. So that, you know, the township can see how they, see how the applicants comply with those standards and also would help the answer questions from the residents.
Then I, then I'm going to have to make a comment on that. I would respectfully ask that you have a conversation with the solicitor as to who has the burden with respect to those standards. I don't believe that it is the applicant. I don't want to get into a legal debate. But what I'm reluctant to do is to try the case outside of the hearing. There'll be a hearing, a condition's hearing, where there will be burdens allocated. The burden with the majority of the things, I believe, Mr. Wilson, that you're talking about, is not a burden that falls on the applicant. I know it's counterintuitive, but that's the way that it works.
Okay.
I think Mr. Preston just said he didn't want to get into a legal argument. But I do disagree, Mr. Preston, in that the zoning officer has laid out the conditional use standards as set forth in the zoning ordinance. And if what you're saying is that you don't have to show that you meet those objective criteria, I'm not sure I follow.
Oh, I'm sorry. He was, he was talking about the criteria in the zoning officer's letter, which are all the subjective criteria. If he's talking about the objective criteria, we absolutely have a burden with that, with respect to the subjective criteria. For example, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? We have no burden with respect to that. Is it suitable for the surrounding neighborhood in terms of whatever? We have no burden with respect to that. That's the case law. Those are subjective criteria. Generally, how you can tell them apart is the subject, subjective criteria appear in a list that are applicable to each and every additional use throughout the township without distinguishing between the categories. The objective criteria are those that are listed in a particular section for your use. With respect to the subjective criteria, the applicant does not have a burden on those. We have a burden with respect to the objective criteria. With respect to the subjective criteria, that provides an opportunity, an objector, to demonstrate non-compliance. But they have to do so. It's a very high bar, but.
Okay, well, what I think Mr. Wilson is asking you to do is submit a response in terms of the objective criteria.
Absolutely. I apologize. If that's what you were asking for, Mr. Wilson, then that's my fault. I misunderstood.
Yes, that's actually, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I'm sorry. Will we be, will we be addressing that at the next Planning Commission meeting? Or is that something we would address with the Board of Commissioners or just so we're all, just so we're all clear here?
Well, as far as the objective criteria, we've already met those. We just have to point out how we did that. So if you go back, what's the minimum lot size for this? Is there, is there a minimum lot size, for example? You don't have to tell me what it is. But to get into this particular aspect, this TND commercial, isn't there a minimum lot size?
Correct. Yes, there is.
Well, then, if we've met that, we've met it. That's an objective criteria. It has to have public water? Yes, we've met that. It has to have public sewer? Yes, we've met that. Those are the objective criteria.
So if the objective materials are the items that have to be met, just so everyone, for transparency and everyone knows the situation, if that could be provided so everyone knows that it has been met or, you know, you have to show that you met it, that would help communicate with everyone, I think.
I understand. I think I know what you're after. I'll try to get it to you. And Tony, for what you're saying is, we would probably provide that prior to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. All right, go back to a motion to take this under advisement.
Still moved.
Second? Okay. You get that? Great.
I'm going to go with Tope to make the motion and Height to second.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, transportation infrastructure update. Is there anything on that, Tony?
Not at this time. I mean, I think everyone knows PennDOT has shut down paving for the season. So, you know, hopefully, everything was winterized. We worked with Township State to get there. All of our projects winterized throughout the township. And we'll see what starts up again after, after the winter.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is the township paving shut down as well?
Um, the town, I'm going to say the township has the ability to pave what they so choose. But I would say that most, if not all, plants are closing, if not closed already. So I would think that they won't be able to get the material. You know, if there's, if there's definitely an emergency, you can probably get some cold passion, put something down. But most likely, most of the plants will be shut down.
I'm just talking about the Eck Road and Crackersport warehouses that the roads aren't finished. But that's the expected.
Yeah, we're working, we are working with Township State. I'm working with Herb and Mike to make sure that they are winterizing and set up that they can be used and drivable as best as possible throughout the winter.
Snow removal today was interesting, to say the least. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item seven, Dave, do you have anything else on the comprehensive plan?
I do not. I was just going to check and try and get the latest number. I grab it real quick. This is, I'm almost there. Five hundred and sixty responses.
That's the survey?
Yep.
What was our goal?
There were five hundred and sixty responses to the survey.
And what was our goal? A thousand?
The goal. We were hoping for a thousand. But we'll have to kind of look at that. We'll take what we get. Let's say, it's definitely trickled to a slow trickle now.
I think we're hoping for a thousand, but would be, would be happy with five hundred. So at this point, we're fairly happy, but always looking for more.
And I'll be the first to admit, I just did it last week, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, agenda item eight, election of officers. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Jennifer.
Okay, we're going to do this pretty quickly, hopefully. So we'll open the floor to nominations for the Office of Chairman.
I'm going to make Bill McNair for chairman.
I'll second.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
You want to do a roll call vote there, Greg?
You got it. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matthew Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Congrats, Bill. All right, we're going to open the floor now to nominations for the Office of Vice Chairman. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Hey, Greg, you want to do a roll call vote, please?
David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Can I vote for myself? Aye.
Yeah.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
I'm thinking about it. Aye.
At least somebody is. Alan Tope.
Hi.
Dave Wilson.
Hi.
One more. Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Greg. All right, last one. Open the floor to nominations for the Office of Secretary. Anyone want to make a motion?
Nominate Alan Tope.
Second.
Okay, Greg.
David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Great. Okay, back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. The twenty twenty-one meeting dates, got, everybody seemed to be okay. It will be the third Thursday of the month.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Every month.
That's, that's great.
Okay. Courtesy of the floor.
I'll let you know next month, we have two plans. We have a sketch plan for Mosaic Campus, which is a little artsy, greenhouse-y thing going on near Morgan's. That should be a reasonably quick one. And then I understand that we're trying to get the Housman Road Flex Building also coming in for preliminary final plan approval in January. And as far as I know, those are the only two projects we have for January.
I found it interesting that the Flex Warehouse put up an available sign for lease. That was interesting to see.
Okay. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Happy holidays, happy new year, and we'll see you soon. I guess again by.